Well, if everybody's ready to go, then we'll begin. The March nine twenty twenty two part, excuse me, Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners being is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Platt?
Yeah.
Commissioners Dona Meyer Wesley. Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have a brief notice to read. As a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and promote social distancing, Prosper Portland is holding this meeting electronically as allowed by state law. All members of the commissioner are attending remotely by computer or phone. And Prosper Portland has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio and video broadcast of this meeting. Public can also provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Excuse me, prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Thank you. All right, shall we start with commissioner reports then? Commissioner Myers, do you have anything?
I actually don't have anything this week.
And Commissioner Platt?
Yes, let's see. Yesterday, I took a very tasty tour of Old Town as a follow-up to the tour I took a week prior. And I got to visit several of the food and drink establishments in the, in the district, as well as follow-up conversations with Jesse Burke and also Carrie from Prosper staff, learn more about the challenges of the district and look forward to following up on that with a general. I think we're trying to schedule a commissioner, an all-hands commissioner tour sometime after our next board meeting, or maybe just before. So I highly recommend it. It's enlightening. I see Friday, March fourth, I chaired the Hacienda Board of Directors meeting. Thursday, the third, again, on behalf of Hacienda, we had a tour of the Court of Portland project facilities for the project that we're involved with them on. And anything else relevant here? Let's see, I'm just looking at my. I think that's it for, oh, and then I also participated in the monthly Business for a Better Portland Board meeting on, which was it? Tuesday, February fifteenth. So I think that's it since our last meeting.
That's great, Commissioner Platt. You've shamed Commissioner Myers and I this time, so thank you. All right. So next, I have nothing to report. So next, we have the Executive Director Report with Executive Director Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cruz, and good afternoon, commissioners. Great to be with you. Well, March is Women's History Month, as you know, and so throughout the month, you'll see on all of our social media channels that we are highlighting women-owned businesses, city and community leaders, and resources that continue to celebrate and facilitate the role of women in our city. So I continue to invite everyone to follow Prosper Portland and Mercatus PDX on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. And there are, there's a lot going on. It feels like spring is in full swing. And so there are a number of events that I want to bring to your attention, as well as some funding opportunities that we want to make sure the community is aware of. So one event that I'm really excited about is that we'll be celebrating the grand opening of the historic Allen Temple CME Church on Northeast Eighth Avenue this coming Saturday, March twelfth. You might recall that the board, as part of a amendment to the TIF district, amended the district to allow for a $700,000 community livability grant, which I think is the largest grant that we've made to support the repair of this important church and community service center that experienced major damage due to a fire. So looking forward to those resources that we invested were specifically for the community center. And we were, we're looking forward to celebrate the reopening of this really important cultural anchor in Northeast Portland. On Monday, March fourteenth, Prosper Portland will open a new round of community livability grants. Speaking of, we're seeking proposals from community-based organizations for projects that foster vibrant and healthy neighborhoods and improve the prosperity of residents and businesses. So we hope you'll help us spread the word. Want to make it very explicit that funds are available for permanent real property improvement. So they must add, expand, or improve physical space. So if you are a nonprofit organization or affiliated with a nonprofit organization and you're listening in, please feel free to go to prosperportland.us/clg for more information. You'll note that priority will be given to projects that benefit communities of color or people with low income and those that promote widely shared prosperity. This is an incredibly popular program, and it's needed to go on hiatus as we've been focused on supporting repair grants and small business relief funds. And so we anticipate that there will be quite a lot of interest. And I want to appreciate all of the work done by Nixie Stark, Amy Nagy, and Megan and Lisa Norwood to prepare us for this launch next week. Speaking of grants, I also want to announce that on Tuesday, March fifteenth, Prosper Portland through the Portland Film Office in partnership with Travel Portland is launching a post-production film grant. The Film Office is offering four grants of $7,500 each for Oregon-based independent film productions. The funding is designed to encourage the completion of local feature-length films and to position local producers to build larger, more resourced productions. Some of the previous awardees have gone on to be widely distributed. And so we're hoping that we will have success again this year. You can find out more at portlandfilmoffice.com. We also want to invite business owners and representatives and commissioners, if you're interested, to attend Greet and Grow next Tuesday, which is March fifteenth. This is a collaboration between three Prosper Portland initiatives, our Portland Athletic and Outdoor Cluster Work, Portland Means Progress, and Mercatus. Greet and Grow is a networking event to connect small business owners, solopreneurs, and makers with experts who can support and elevate their business. That includes capital assistance, that includes technical assistance, that also includes the opportunity for people to learn more about how they can support and buy from diverse local small businesses. The event will feature educational sessions, networking, and happy hour, and is a great opportunity for any small business owner to connect with service providers to help elevate their business. You can find out more at greetandgrow.p, I'm sorry, greetandgrowpdx.com to register for the event, which is taking place at the World Trade Center. All right, as I think some folks are very excited about and well-aware of, we are in March. And so we're about to enter March Madness. And the first two rounds of men's college basketball tournament are happening at the Moda Center next week. One big event that we want to invite folks to attend is in, is the Old Town Block Party. That's happening concurrently on Saturday, March nineteenth, from eleven AM to seven PM. It'll be held on the Northwest Davis Festival Street between Northwest Third and Fourth Avenues. It'll feature great food and drinks, activities, and opportunities to engage with and support local Old Town businesses. So definitely come down after the game or just to get to fill some of the revelry on Saturday, March nineteenth. All right, and before I introduce our new staff colleague, I want to mention that Prosper Portland has released a request for proposals for individuals or firms to provide community outreach navigator services and/or marketing support for the Community Outreach Navigator portion of the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Action Plan. So proposers can submit for both the navigator or the marketing or one of the other support scopes of work. The deadline is March twenty-first at five PM. You can find out more at prosperportland.us/forbusinesses and then click on the RFPs or RFQs and bid opportunities for more information. So looking for folks to help connect local businesses to the products and financial resources that are available in North and Northeast Portland and to help increase, increase awareness of those resources. All right, so last but definitely not least, I'm extremely pleased to welcome and introduce Kevin Flag as Prosper Portland's new Construction Services Coordinator. Kevin grew up in the DC Maryland metro area. And as part of the Dual Degree Engineering Program, he received, get this, a BS in Physics from Morehouse College and a BS in Civil Engineering from the University of Michigan. So yeah, upon graduation, he worked for a Detroit-based general contractor, helping deliver commercial construction projects in the Detroit metro area, as well as retail construction projects for clients in Puerto Rico. We are absolutely delighted to have Kevin on the team. So well, please help me welcome Kevin to Prosper and to Portland. All right.
Great. Thank you, Director Branum, and welcome, Kevin. Very happy to have you and sounds, sounds like you've got some great skills that we can use. So thank you. Great, okay, so next up, I'd like to see about the minutes from our last meeting on February ninth. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Again.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Next up, we have public comment for items not on the agenda. And I understand that Mr. Michael Harrison is with us today to provide some testimony. Mr. Harrison, see you. Great. We can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Branum. My name is Michael Harrison, and I'm speaking on behalf of Portland's bicycling demographic and in support of Portland's bicycling infrastructure. The Oregon Department of Transportation will receive 1.2 billion from the Biden Administration over the next few years. This is a good opportunity to vastly improve our bicycle infrastructure, mostly in the form of a true bicycle skyway system. Specifically, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, recently debated in the legislature, should the bicycle skyway. Portland has a substantial bicycle culture, and we can benefit from this kind of infrastructure. I do not have a car myself. I use my bike to get around everywhere in the Portland area, as do thousands of other Portlanders. I would encourage Prosper Portland to include a bicycle skyway system as part of its economic development plans. Other cities like Miami, Florida are already designing their own bicycle skyway systems. More information can be found at planzimiami.com. The current bicycle infrastructure here in Portland, it is green, these and sharrows. While it's nice, still leaves a lot to be desired. We basically have to ride in the gutter most of the time. A bicycle skyway, which is continuous and elevated above street level for several miles, will completely separate the bicycle traffic from the car traffic in its local area. It, it will be the kind of thing people can use to get to work every morning safely on their bikes. There is a strong environmental aspect to this. As Americans, we have to ask ourselves, how long will the gasoline last? I know that sounds funny. With all the problems we have with the oil industry exploding oil rigs, for example, we cannot keep using gasoline for most of our transportation needs. In 2020, Governor Brown signed Executive Order 2004, which specifically orders ODOT to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Bicycle Skyway would help to satisfy that. I have sent some short emails to a few legislators concerning this. A public hearing at the legislator, legislature about bicycle infrastructure, considering all this money coming in for transportation is in order. I have made an entire professional display. I would be happy to bring it into Prosper Portland and ensure everyone. My website is bikeshiway.org. This concludes my testimony.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate your time and thanks for raising this issue with us. We will, we will keep it in mind.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah. Pam, did we have any other public testimony today?
None, Chair Cruz. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So next up, we have several information items today. And the first one is an update on Prosper Portland's entrepreneurship programs. And we have Morgan Masterman, Yvonne Smoker, and Amanda Park all here to testify, I hope. Welcome. All right, who would like to go first?
That would be me. Hello. Everyone again. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Branum. My name is Yvonne Smoker. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm one of the program chairs for the Inclusive Business Resource Network. I'll be providing an update on our entrepreneurship programs with my colleagues and fellow program managers, Morgan Masterman and Amanda Park. Next slide, please. Today, we're going to provide an overview of our entrepreneurship programs and outcomes. We will also touch on our upcoming requests for proposals with some invited testimony from local business owners and then open it up for discussion and questions. Next slide, please. Since 2017, the Inclusive Business Resource Network has grown from twelve to twenty providers. Our partners are critical to the success of this work and are rooted in communities of color. Most business advisors working with IBR and clients identifies people of color, and many are or have been business owners themselves. Expertise in managing IBR has positioned Prosper Portland to become the go-to small business development agency. For example, Prosper Portland received cannabis tax revenue funds to support a new program to serve cannabis entrepreneurs of color. To date, the network has served more than 2,900 entrepreneurs with more than 100,000 hours of service. This includes sixty-eight percent Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and fifty-six percent Women and Gender Expansive Entrepreneurs. In addition, fifty-four percent of clients served, earned eighty percent or less than the median family income. These entrepreneurs own 2,550 businesses. Of those who reported the data, the top two industries were in accommodation and food services and retail. And nearly ninety-five percent of these businesses have one to five employees. Next slide, please. As I mentioned in the previous slide, sixty-eight percent of participants identified as Black, Indigenous, Latinx, Asian, and Pacific Islander and other people of color. This chart shows how participants identify based on a single race or ethnicity. About six percent of participants identified as multiracial. We do also have additional disaggregated data for these participants. Nine percent of participants chose not to identify. Next slide, please. And now I'll provide a brief overview of Mercatus. Mercatus began in 2016 as a business directory and storytelling platform for entrepreneurs of color. Mercatus has seen a steady increase of new directory membership from fifty-plus in 2016 to now more than 1,000 members. Twenty percent of members have received advising services through IBR. As IBR has allowed Prosper Portland to work more closely in partnership with community organizations, Mercatus has strengthened Prosper Portland's relationship with business owners in underserved communities. Amanda will go into more detail about these Mercatus initiatives later on, but briefly, they are: Member Direct, Member Marketing and Exposure, which includes the Mercatus Business Director Picture Day and the Digital Marketing Program; Business Growth Pathways, which includes the Connect Board, a partnership with Portland Means Progress; Greet and Grow, a partnership with the Athletic and Outdoor Program; and My People's Market, a partnership with Travel Portland; Community Building, which includes Momentous, the Members Newsletter, Storytelling, and My People's Market. You can see a breakdown of the directory demographics in the chart on the slide. Please note that members are able to select more than one category, and the data may show multiple owners for one business. The top four industries represented in the Mercatus Directory are Consumer Products, Food and Beverage, Health and Wellness, and Professional Services. Members can also select multiple sectors. Next slide, please. We have found that it is helpful to the understanding of how IBR works by providing a visual representation of an example client journey. So on this slide, we show a native food entrepreneur who connects with a culturally-specific navigator. They are provided with advising and are also referred to other providers for intensive services. They also access specialized services like legal and recipe development support. Eventually, they have a product. They may sell at My People's Market and meet a new season's buyer. When they are ready to sell beyond the region, they get referred to one of our growth programs, such as the Increase Project. This is a long-term journey that may take several years. And now I'll hand it off to my colleague, Morgan Masterman.
Thanks, Yvonne. Next slide, Justin. So as Yvonne mentioned, one of the goals of the Inclusive Business Resource Network is to advance opportunities for prosperity by supporting businesses and growing their assets and supporting business ownership. This is a photo of Lee Hegemon, an IBR participant and owner of Barreled B and a master distiller at Freeland Spirits. Lee is pictured here at her booth at the My People's Market Five located at Broadway Corridor in the summer of 2019. Lee is an example of a business owner who has accessed multiple services to grow her business. And if you, if you go to the next slide, we'll go ahead and talk about some outcomes of our program. The program tracks business progress year over year toward our overall five-year outcomes. Partners report outcome measures annually for clients who are served with intensive programming, which is generally about thirty hours or more of advising a year. To date, providers have reported that three hundred and forty-five unique businesses have met the following outcomes. So we see two hundred and ninety-five businesses became strong and stable, one hundred and fifty-five businesses achieved growth milestones, twenty-three businesses scaled their operations, and ninety-seven startups launched. Seventy-two percent of businesses represented here are owned by entrepreneurs of color. This is a point-in-time measurement that will continue to increase as partners report client milestones throughout the next several months. So for example, an additional one hundred seventy-five businesses have met between seventy-five and eighty-five percent of the requirements toward the strong and stable outcome. And so we anticipate that these numbers will increase going forward. Next slide. Financial data is also reported for clients who receive intensive support. And to capture a long-term analysis of business financials, we looked at gross sales for businesses who reported this information for three consecutive years, 2018 through 2020. Those one hundred and seven businesses saw cumulative fifty-four percent increase in sales. And you can see the average and total sales for each year on your screen. We'd like to note that eleven companies hit the 1 million mark in gross sales. And of those eleven, six of them had more than five employees. And examples include a construction firm, a jeweler and retailer, and a design and fabrication firm. Additionally, fourteen companies hit 500,000 in gross sales. And those include a food and clothing retailer, a property management firm, and five ethnic restaurants and food carts. From, from those who reported jobs data, since the inception of IBR, approximately 660 businesses created just over 1,100 jobs, which is an average of about 1.7 jobs per business. Next slide, please. So it's an understatement to say that COVID has impacted small businesses in a great way. We've tried to better understand the status and health of businesses throughout the pandemic by asking our business advisors to complete a client pulse check. We provided five categories ranging from stable to permanently closed. And we asked the advisors to prioritize reporting this information for clients who they were more currently engaged with as they were more intimately aware of the business operations for those clients. Pulse checks were completed about every six months, and so far, we've collected nearly 1,500 responses from 765 businesses. And from our most recent pulse checks, which were in September of 21, we have the information from 573 businesses. And if you look on the far right, you'll see that stability has increased drastically since the prior two pulse checks. So that's something nice to, to see. And finally, I'll just state, say that while most business closures are unfortunate, since COVID began, advisors reported that only seven percent of businesses closed, while sixty-nine percent of businesses were reported to be at some point stable or recovering. And I will go ahead and pass it to Amanda. Talk to us about Mercatus.
Thanks, Morgan. Since 2016, Mercatus has seen significant growth, especially over the first few years, almost doubling in 2017, eighteen, and then again in 2018, nineteen. Since then, the growth has leveled off with a lull in 2019, 2020 year, but picking back up with approximately thirty percent growth last year, and we expect to see close to the same this year. Over the years, Mercatus has developed services and resources in three areas. I'm going to tell you first about the member marketing and exposure, which includes some of the larger investments that Mercatus services make. First is Picture Day, where a business can sign up to be entered in a lottery to receive a free headshot. We've partnered with Cottija Pendergrass of KRP Photography, also a Mercatus member. This is a high-demand offering, and we are hopeful to be able to expand services in 2022, 23. In 2019, we launched, launched the Digital Marketing Program, which provides entrepreneurs with a grant as well as one-on-one consulting services. We recognize the digital marketing and operations were transitioning for companies from a nice-to-have to a need-to-have. And of course, this was exasperated when the pandemic hit. In 2020, we also noticed quickly that social media was playing an increasingly large role for our companies, as well as for, for us as, as a program to stay engaged with the Mercatus community. Our social media manager recognized that Mercatus had an important role to play in keeping our community connected and also ensuring that the BIPOC business is represented on the directory were spotlighted when the general public became more engaged in social justice initiatives. The increased focus on so, on our social media community has led to significant increase in social, our social media following, from just over a thousand followers in 2020 to over 5,500 followers this year. Our social media page has also helped establish the Black Home Business Guide, commanding thousands of visitors year-round with link backs from several notable private sector supporters, such as the Portland Trail Blazers, Portland Monthly, Eater PDX, and Willamette Week. The Black Home Business Guide has also inspired a series of culturally-specific business guides that are launched throughout the year in coordination with Cultural Heritage Months. Next slide. Our next focus is on the business growth pathways. In 2017, Prosper Portland and Travel Portland teamed up to leverage the Mercatus Business Directory and expand business growth opportunities for BIPOC businesses and tourism. That collaboration resulted in My People's Market, which I'll tell you a lot about in the next presentation. Each event hosts seventy-five to 150 businesses and connects business owners with regional buyers, as well as thousands of shoppers. Greet and Grow, which Kimberly spoke about earlier, is an annual event that land, launched in 2020, and it connects small business professional service providers with other small businesses. In 2021, the event was postponed due to COVID, but we're excited to resume the event next week. This is in collaboration with the Athletic and Outdoor Program and Portland Means Progress. Greet and Grow is the perfect venue to provide growth opportunities to service-oriented Mercatus members. And it's, in its debut year, the event drew hundreds of small businesses to meet with vendors. And this year, we're excited to host thirty new vendors and expect upwards of 200 visitors. Then the Connect Board, which is the newest addition to the Mercatus suite of growth pathways programming. In partnership with Portland Means Progress, the Connect Board provides a bulletin of business contracting opportunities to Mercatus, Mercatus members. Companies and public sector partners interested in more intentional purchasing can share contracts or procurement opportunity, procurement opportunities through the Connect Board. It has become widely used for those contracts that are often considered too small for a large RFP process. And to date, we've had thirty-four opportunities posted, which have a shared value of around $323,000. Next slide. Lastly, the third focus of Mercatus is around community building and connections. Mercatus members have shared that one of the biggest benefits of being a member is the opportunity to connect with other BIPOC businesses. Community can take on many forms. On our social media, for example, it can mean a business owner sees another business like theirs or a business from their community. Mercatus storytelling content is reaffirming for many Mercatus members. And just in 2021, we featured nearly a hundred business stories and spotlights. You can see on the slide in the left corner, some of the stories that we've posted for Black History Month. If you're curious or want to learn more about the stories, you can always go to Mercatus, Mercatus PDX on Instagram to see those stories. Mercatus is built on close relationships with members and bringing in community to inform. Mercatus is built on close relationships with members and bringing in community to inform our priorities and programming. Partnerships have strengthened the networks for business owners in cultivating community and leveraging resources. And that theme continues through entrepreneurship programming, and especially with IBRN.
Next slide. So in twenty seventeen, IBRN Services began with many of the partners you see on this slide. They were all selected through a request for proposals. Through these partnerships, the backbone of IBRN was built. And we are so grateful for these relationships and for the amazing work that these organizations and their staff have done to support Portland's small business community over the last several years. As we move into the next five years of programming, we will be issuing a new RFP. And we are in a position of being mindful of our long-term partnerships while also being transparent and honoring the competitive process. To that end, we saw early feedback from current partners to help inform for future programming. And now that the RFP process has begun in earnest, conversations have been limited to ensure that no privileged information is being shared prior to our public conversations. So let's talk a little bit more about the RFP. Next slide, please. So in developing programming for the next five years, we've used a racial equity and results-based accountability framework, and we are centering the voices of entrepreneurs of color. Last summer, we helped focus groups with more than fifty entrepreneurs of color, and we recently engaged with an evaluation committee who is also helping us with some of the program design work. We are hosting a community session, actually is happening next Thursday, seventeenth, for folks to learn about our current design and to provide critical feedback before we move into the next phase. We anticipate issuing the RFP at the end of April, with awards announced in August and new contracts executed in October. Next slide. From the early conversations with current partners and colleagues to the small business focus groups, we have learned a lot about IBRN. And more detail around how we are incorporating lessons learned into our new programming is going to be shared next week through the Prosper Portland Newsletter and at our community session. But we wanted to provide some high-level highlights. Entrepreneurs need flexible programming and quick access to necessary professional services. And COVID has certainly shown us how critical that is. Uh, we need to track meaningful outcomes, and the data points need to be easily reported. And getting back to the importance of partnerships, our partner agreements need to be realistic and sustainable. Next slide. Um, I now have the honor of introducing you to two women who will share their journey as business owner and the experience they've had with IBRN on their business growth paths. Um, I've included their websites on the screen, so you know how to support their businesses. First, you'll hear from Amalia Sierra. She's the owner of Tierra del Sol. And then she'll be followed by Kiki Momo, owner of Himalayan Dumplings. And I think they're both with us right now, so I will invite Amalia to join us.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to say thank you to Prosper Portland for the honor to share my journey as a woman entrepreneur. My name is Amalia Sierra, and I'm the owner of Tierra del Sol, Oaxaca, New York. When I started, remember my journey, I was in tears to see my growing and how far I had came. I started my business in two thousand twelve, when I enjoyed the Portland Mercado project. This was a very, very difficult time in my life, and I needed support to make it very much. For me, the Portland Mercado program was my salvation. They were workers who to me were angels, faces and names who don't go anymore with this company, the people that I'd never forget. Because they give me the, the tools to empower me. I came with nothing, yes, good ideas, and the desire to be a successful. The Portland Mercado program, program provide me with a business advisor and helping me to develop my business plan. Registered my business and got my, my health department licenses and even founded my business through Casa Orego. In two thousand thirteen, while I waiting for the Mercado to open, we started selling food at the King Farmers Market and doing catering services. At the first, we had a small boot, yes, me and my children's working. We do not only have a small menu, there are dishes where I know. In two thousand fifteen, we opened our first food cart at the Portland Mercado. We exceeded our expectation in sales. And I am able to hire a job now, yes, for me, before twelve employees. And in two thousand, and in two thousand twenty, even through the, it was the COVID pandemic, we opened our second location in Northeast Portland. We worked very hard to grow our brand. We went from giving free samples to the public and host to be recognized to being mentioned in places like Edith Portland in Mercury. All the efforts has paid off. Thank you, God. I still have to work to grow my business. In two thousand nineteen, I took the increase project class at Laihood. Laihood has, has been a big support in continuing my business goal. And I still working with them today. They have helped me with my skills in finance, marketing, and quit books. I now run my own pain role in accounting. Here, I also blessed with a mentor that helps me with my business. My mentor has helped me on my journey. She has the ability to connect me with another, with a lot of resources and opportunities. I would like to say thank you, Prosper Portland for the funds they provide to agencies like Portland Mercado and Laihood. I'm thankful for all the opportunities I have been able to receive in order to achieve my independence. You cannot imagine the impact that those organizations have on people's lives. And now I have a freedom that I was so despair when I was started. And now I can help support others in my community. And thank you very much for, for inviting me to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Now we have another speaker, uh, Kiki Momo.
Yeah, I'm here, but I'm having trouble turning on the, starting the video. It says Zoom is unable to detect a camera. I'm not sure what's what's going on.
Okay, we can hear you, Kiki.
Yeah.
Should I proceed?
Proceed without it. Sure.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, um, thank you so much, first of all, for, uh, giving me this opportunity to share my story and hopefully be able to put a human face to the type of impacts that organizations such as yours has on immigrants like me. Um, my name is Kiki, and I am the founder of Himalayan Dumplings. It is the first woman-owned Tibetan frozen food, food brand in the United States. I launched about two and a half months ago, late, late December of twenty twenty-one, in spite of being told by many that the barriers to entry into the frozen food, um, segment is too high for someone of my stature. So all of pandemic, I worked my butt off, if I may say so, and navigated what I could used, self-funded and used all of the fundings, the money that I saved from pop-ups that I had done in prior years before the pandemic began. And, um, began my journey to launch. And so I launched two, two and a half months ago, and I truly couldn't have done it without the business services that I had access through, through an organization named Accelerate. Before that, I had been working for months, and I felt lost and overwhelmed because I couldn't afford consultation services, and there was so much information. And I accidentally found out about Accelerate. My goodness, that was a turning point for me. It was when I spoke to Amy during our first meeting, Director of Accelerate, that I truly, for the first time, felt that my dream could be possible. That was when I really felt confident that, yes, it will still be extremely hard. And I'm sure the community organizations that told me that barriers to entry are too high is still true, but it is still possible. And so, yeah, I'm, I feel so grateful towards, um, Prosper Portland service organizations like Accelerate. While I am considered a food startup, because I started about two and a half months ago, I launched, I specialize in Himalayan dumplings, frozen Himalayan dumplings and Tibetan hen pies. My journey began well, well before that. When I immigrated to the U.S., um, as a young adult, I was very, very eager, like I imagine many immigrants and refugees, to fit in. I tried to adopt American accent, so I don't stand out. I tried to disassociate myself now in hindsight. I was unconsciously distancing myself from my own cultural foods and anything that made me feel like I was an outsider. And it was upon motherhood when I had two daughters of mixed heritages that I had, it was this epiphany sort of, you know, where I found myself gravitating towards my traditional cultural foods. And then, and I found myself using these foods as a medium to connect my daughters of mixed heritage. Here I am, it's an immigrant mom in the U.S., raising two daughters of mixed heritages. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, this is beyond me. And so, so that, that was basically the start of my journey in, in representation, in using food as my love language to truly not only, not only preserve my at-risk Tibetan heritage, but also to introduce, which in that case was at a very micro level, my two toddlers. And that effort and desire to represent and spread awareness grew through pop-up markets when I attended the first Beaverton Night Market, uh, with my toddlers. And I saw firsthand how powerful food can be to really become that non-threatening gateway for people of different backgrounds to, you know, get familiar with cultures outside of your own. And that was when I decided to apply for Beaverton Night Market the following year. I even kept it a secret because I was so sure I would not get it. And so anyway, I got in, um, since then, I participated in My Peoples Market too, which has been huge for me in really growing my, not only growing my business, but also, um, in building business experience, um, in that area, which I did not have. And so I did that for about four or five years before the pandemic seasonally because I didn't start doing this to make money. I truly saw a need for it because there was no cultural representation as far as our food is concerned. And so it was my way, it was how I knew best to represent and spread awareness. And so for my daughters, it went to my pop-ups, and then it went from Beaverton to Portland to all around, you know, Portland, uh, metro area pop-ups wherever they were. And I did that for about four or five years to sold out crowds. I was averaging one customer every two minutes. That's how great the market validation was. In hindsight, that was market validation. Whereas at that time, I was like, oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, I can't believe it. People are interested. Not only are they interested, they're actually enjoying it. They're coming back for more, you know? And then the pandemic happened, and in the back of my mind, I always had this desire to, to continue scaling or growing my impact, my reach. And I always wanted to sell, have a national reach, and wanted to frozen foods. And I had asked around, and at that time, I'd been told multiple times that it is just too costly for a small mom and pops to, to pursue an initiative like this. And then pandemic happened, and I don't know how I became more bold, but I decided to do it anyway in a haphazard manner. But I did, using the monies that I saved for my pop-ups. And that's when I came across Accelerate. They gave me access to marketing strategies, business strategies. Helped me, um, gain clarity with my roadmap and all of that and some more. And I, I truly believe it is with the, it is with the, um, help of these business services that I received during my pre-launch that made my pre-launch timeline six months, seven months, fairly short and seamless. And when I launched at the end of December, I had sales, I had done a rough sales forecast because I didn't quite know what to expect. But I was seeing sales in month one and month two that what I thought would take me six months or so. And last, when I checked my sales report earlier this week, I saw that forty percent of my monthly sales are repeat customers. So I know that once again, it has reaffirmed the market validation is there. Right now, my biggest challenge is resources. I hear a lot of people say, oh, there are lots of grants of people like you. But I look around, I've come across a lot of corporate, corporate, uh, what you call it, grants. And, you know, I applied for a couple of grants, but like FedEx and so on this past week. And, you know, one thing that I realized when I was filling in these applications, grant applications, was I, I found myself downplaying my activism, my role. As a Tibetan immigrant in, in, I don't know how familiar the audience is with what's going on in Tibet, but part of what I do, um, is because, uh, because I'm as a third generation in exile. I'm using the relative freedoms that I have in the United States as an American citizen now to do what I can to speak up for my people, for my ancestors, for my grandparents who never got to return to the land. And so as a displaced person, I use a privilege, relative privileges that I have in the U.S. to speak up. And, um, food is one of the ways that I feel most comfortable doing so. But as I was writing this grant, I realized how much I was trying to downplay my activism, my role in activism because I know, I know how the corporate world works, and I know how aggressive, in this case, the Chinese Communist regime, I don't want to turn this political, but this is my reality. I know how much corporations try to stay neutral in this. And so as to not offend another country, which is a big economy like China. So I found myself downplaying my activism role in these essays and focused solely on the cultural preservation side of it. And I thought to myself, I'm probably not going to get it if they start checking my social media and see how active I am in the political aspect of it. Because I would be too controversial of a grant recipient to pick up, you know, unnecessary PR stuff or whatever. So anyway, the reason why I share this with you is to hopefully convey to you how important organizations such as yours play in helping people like me, who are in the U.S., also for political refer, uh, you know, reasons to seek refuge and stuff like that, who may not necessarily also have access to opportunity, brand opportunities and stuff like that to corporate for political reasons and stuff like that. So I hope I'm able to put a human face, a human story to what you all do. And I hope that one day you can look back and say, yeah, that's, that's woman, that Tibetan woman right there. We helped her start up. And, you know, someday, I hope, I truly hope to not only be in name the first Tibetan frozen food brand, you know, woman-owned frozen food brand in the U.S., but truly have that national, national reach. And today I start with local markets doing pre-orders, and it's going extremely well where I'm selling out and having to close out the window. And my biggest bottleneck right now is that I can't keep up. So I'm looking into automation. I'm actively looking into property because I'm using a shared commissary kitchen, which is all that I can afford. And so, yes, so right now my bottleneck is business resources, which I'm receiving through Accelerate and then funding. So I'm looking around for funding to see what I can get. And so that's my story. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much for those comments. That's a great, um, a great and inspiring story. So we're very happy to have you with us today.
Thank you very much.
Did, uh, did staff have any further comments, uh, Yvonne or Morgan or Amanda?
Nope, just any, um, discussion questions you guys have.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners, comments?
I have one. Um I'm just curious about, you know, this, this program, the IBRN program is near and dear to my heart. And I just wonder, how is our budget for this next year? I forget how this compares to last year. Even our materials we have last year, of course.
Yeah.
How are we doing for next year?
Luckily, um m- majority of our budget is ongoing general fund. And we also get some of our funding through the Housing Bureau, a community development block grant money. Um, so that has been great. We have received um some increases over the last few years and usually that has been ongoing increases. So um we are working with um the Office of Management and Finance on some of the specific programming with uh regard to the construction programming and the cannabis money, I think is still being um discussed at that council level in terms of if we are able to access any of those for additional funding. But overall, it's um, it's around uh for, well, let's see, yeah, about um almost three and a half to four million dollar program. Depending if you um include our COVID money and all that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, this is a great presentation. Uh really appreciate all the information. Uh it's great. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Cruz, apologies for the interruption, but I have to make an announcement about our live stream. Open Signal, which is the service that uh provides our live streaming of this meeting to YouTube, has announced that uh Pacific Power has some sort of an emergency repair on some equipment. Um that's affecting seven hundred and thirty customers and unfortunately Open Signal is one of those seven hundred and thirty. So we're likely going to lose Open Signal at four PM, which means that uh anybody who is watching this meeting uh via the YouTube live, YouTube live stream will likely be cut off from that. Um, that shouldn't affect anybody on the meeting right now. We are recording this via Zoom and after the meeting, we uh can post the recording of the Zoom meeting on our website and I believe we can also post it to the YouTube channel um uh as soon as tomorrow morning. So uh just wanted to let everyone know.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, well, next up we have uh item seven, which is also an information item. This is an update on my People's Market. And Amanda Park uh is going to join us again to discuss that. So welcome, welcome back, Amanda.
Thank you. Good to still be here. Uh good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Branham. Um, just there we go. Great. If you want to go to the next slide. Thank you. I'm going to tell you a little bit today about the brief history of my People's Market in pictures. You're going to meet the Advisory Board. Uh here are our mission. Learn about the artists, the connections and community, hear about the impact and then see what we have coming ahead. Next slide. Looking back, My People's Market launched in November twenty seventeen and it grew from a desire to create pathways for entrepreneurs of color to connect with the tourism industry and explore new market opportunities. The market was founded by Travel Portland and Prosper Portland. In addition, young, gifted, black and brown Portland joined the team to support the first market in twenty seventeen. Together, we have remained an integral team um and part of the event. At Prosper Portland, the market brings several programs together, My People's Market, Mercatus and the Inclusive Business Resource Network. Next slide. As we continue to look back, you'll see collaborations are an integral part of the market. Partners over the years include Lloyd Center for hosting our first holiday pop-up space. The Portland Business Alliance's PDX pop-up program, which has connected several My People's Market Mercatus businesses with retail experiences. Built Oregon, what uh marketplace for hosting a My People's Market online store. And of course, our dedicated sponsors at New Seasons and Portland State School of Business, which have provided workshops and one-on-one support for either getting um on the shelves at New Seasons or exploring digital marketing with Portland State Marketing Students. And community is at the heart of My People's Market. We have been honored to host the Vanport Mosaic, Oregon Black Pioneers, Albina Queens, the Oregon Nikki Legacy Center, Sneaker Week and North Northeast Community Health Clinic, just to name a few. Uh next slide. Since twenty seventeen, we have hosted eight My People's Markets across Portland, providing space for between seventy-five and a hundred and fifty vendors at each market. And as we head into our anniversary year, we've seen three hundred and sixty-five unique businesses participate. In addition, we've hosted one pop-up shop, two window shops, one online marketplace and a day, a curbside pickup, which debuted this holiday season. In total, we've seen more than forty thousand people come to our events. Next slide. In April of twenty twenty-one, Prosper Portland staff recruited a group of amazing My People's Market community members to launch the My People's Market Advisory Board. The committee's purpose will likely shift over time. But during the inaugural year, the hope is that they can make recommendations about the strategic vision for the market, establish continuity of organizational knowledge and provide accountability. The Advisory Board will also play an integral part in the long-term plan for the market as we explore a permanent location. Next slide. One of the first tasks the group tackled was developing a mission statement and values. The mission statement calls out three priorities. One, the well-being and comfort of people of color. Two, providing space and resources for new and existing businesses to grow and reach new markets. And three, honoring local artists and performances for the vibrancy and joy they bring to the space. Next slide. My People's Market is a space for artists. As I mentioned, YGB Portland has partnered with My People's Market since its launch in twenty seventeen in their role as art and culture coordinator. And with them, we've seen nearly a hundred artists share their talents. My People's Market provides a place for artists of color to perform for diverse communities and they've come to appreciate and expect fair compensation for their performances. Next, I'm honored and excited to welcome Camilla Adams, founder of Mimi's Fresh Teas and My People's Market Advisory Board member. She's going to speak a little bit about the My People's Market community and connections.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Amanda. I'm excited to be here. And I look forward to uh presenting the remaining part of this presentation. Next slide, please. So building connection is what My People's Market does. Um I first started uh my business. Well, my first market was at My People's Market and um My People's Market is the beacon of diversity and inclusion and it just makes us all feel like we belong there. Next slide. Um so building community and making sure that um My People's Market also is they build a lot of bridges with uh community members and um and develop new friendships. Uh my experience has been that I have um I curated a um woman on collective space in my store and pretty much a hundred percent of the makers that were in my space. Uh I developed friendships from My People's Market. So to me, this is more than just a market. It is definitely a sense of community and a sense of belonging. And you do develop genuine relationships there. Next slide. And the vendor experience. Um from what I've heard and just from my own experience, people love the energy, they love the atmosphere, the live music. Um the safety is a safe place because my, pretty much all of the vendors are people of color. So it's important that we have a safe uh safe place for vendors to participate in markets. The feeling is amazing, it's kid-friendly. Uh my favorite part is like the wellness center, the music, the art that they have for the kids, the diversity. Um and just the dope vibe that they have there. Next slide.
Great. Thank you, Camilla. Um, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about how the markets have gone so far this year. For My People's Market seven, this was the largest event in Portland since COVID began. Uh we hosted the event in the north park blocks where we were able to bring some energy and people back downtown. Uh the pandemic didn't seem to deter attendees conservatively. We saw between seven and ten thousand people come and they were ready to spend with an estimated uh sales of around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the weekend and an average about four hundred and sixty dollars per vendor. Next slide. My People's Market eight was also a new adventure for us. Uh this was in the midst of Omicron and just two months after My People's Market seven, so there wasn't a lot of turnaround time. But the event team worked furiously to ensure the safety of vendors and attendees was first and foremost. Um if you were able to attend, chances are you noticed it was a bit chilly. We had all the doors open in the middle of December, but that was to help keep the the air circulating and make sure that attendees and the vendors felt safe. Um in addition, we limited vendors um each day to help manage the crowds. That amounted to a smaller event, which was something that we weren't, weren't so accustomed to seeing. And although we didn't see attendee turnout like we would for our larger events, the sales were nothing to laugh at. With average sales almost double what vendors made at other My People's Market events. Uh I'm sure the holiday season helped, but people were eager to be there and be eager to support these companies. And next slide. So what is coming? This month, we are really excited to partner with the National Public Library Association Conference, which will be hosted in Portland at the end of the month and is expected to draw more than three thousand people. They have provided space to host several My People's Market businesses at their convention. This provides a unique opportunity for makers and consumer product-oriented companies to explore a new market and a new audience. Coordination with conventions isn't new. Um we've done this before. Uh coordinating our markets around larger conferences has been a great benefit of the partnership between Travel Portland, who often is negotiating and working with convention um holders and Prosper Portland. Our summer market coincides with the return of the National Conference on Race and Equity. The conference first came to Portland in twenty nineteen and the timing was right to invite attendees to My People's Market five. Conference organizers really appreciated the coordination of the two events. So so much that in planning their return, they asked if it was possible to do it again and we were happy to oblige. My People's Market nine is early June. Dates are tentatively June third, fourth and fifth and will coincide with the National Conference on Race and Equity. Uh the event is located on Prosper Portland's workshop blocks just near Omsi. We are really excited to share that the location is slated to be the temporary home of My People's Market for the next two years as we explore a long-term plan and potentially a permanent site. In addition, we hope to expand the market from twice a year to a quarterly event pending the um ARP funding request we have. Uh My People's Market continues to grow and adapt to the needs of our community and we are excited to see where our planning takes us. Next slide. And that's all we have for you today. Are there any questions?
Thank you. That was, that was great. And uh it's a great program. I've, I've done, I haven't done all of them, but I've done a few of them and they've been fantastic. So uh does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's great. I've, I've been to several and always fun, always leave with bags of goodies. So uh yeah, I look forward to see more.
I agree with both of you. Yeah, I've been to a few and always a great time. So was it for the next one?
Thanks very much, Amanda. Really appreciate that. It was great.
Thank you.
Oh, there's Camilla. Thank you very much. Glad to have you with us today.
Thank you.
Okay, well, next up we have item eight is our last item of the day. This is an update on the inclusive economic development strategy. And Andrea Gall and Roger Gonzalez will present on that. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having us. Uh my name's Andrea Gall and I'm a project manager on the Business and Industry Team in the Economic Development Department. And I'm co-project managing the Inclusive Economic Development Strategy uh with Roger Gonzalez, who's also reporting today. And of course, I have to say, there's a lot of team members working on this, so we're the ones presenting it today, but there's been a lot of effort with the comms team, economic development team, procurement, governance and learning. So it's definitely a team effort. And today our earl, our update with you is a relatively early update in the project. So we're excited to bring y'all in really early in the project and just let you know where we're at and where we're going. Next slide, please. The Inclusive Economic Development Strategy will establish a roadmap for creating widely shared economic prosperity grounded in racial equity and the transition to a zero-carbon economy. So this is a citywide, not Prosper Portland-specific strategy. And the focus on it is on economic prosperity. So it's not intended to be a comprehensive plan for the city or go more into realms like housing policy. This is really aiming to be a tactical and specific strategy focused on economic development. Uh in the development, we're partnering with EPS, particularly given that there is such a strong climate justice lens. And the mayor's office and Commissioner Rubio's office are helping supporting us in developing the strategy. The process to develop the strategy will be aiming to finalize in fall of twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. In terms of objectives, we want to identify key policies, approaches, partnerships and investments necessary to achieve inclusive, sustainable economic growth in the next three to five years. So again, the goal here is looking really at that five-year lens and it's citywide to identify a theory of change that will drive us to sustainable economic growth. Uh the end product is not intended to be Prosper Portland Strategic Plan. Again, it's a citywide uh economic strategy, but it's definitely going to inform the Prosper Portland Strategic Planning Process, which will take place after this strategy is complete. Next slide, please. Right now, we're in the middle of the RFP process, so we don't have consultants on board yet for this project. So again, we're coming early in this process. The RFP is divided into four scopes. One is project management, analysis and planning. One is inclusive engagement and communications, equity and inclusion advisor and climate resilience and adaptation advisor. So this is really a unique way for us to do the RFP process. Instead of calling on practitioner, instead of calling on consultants to come to us with a full team made, we have split out the scopes and we're asking individual consulting companies to propose on one or multiple of them, depending on where their skills are. And then our evaluation committees are going to bring together a multidisciplinary team. So again, it's not seeking that one organization or consulting company that can do everything, but building a team based on the strongest proposals in each scope. The selected consultants will interact with each other, working together based on their expertise and role to help build uh the city's inclusive economic development strategy. So it'll include data analysis, community engagement, racial equity expertise and climate expertise to feed into the strategy coming altogether. And that'll be one of the first steps, once we have the consultant, consulting team brought together, is to create space for them to come together as a team and work out how these scopes will work together to build the strongest strategy possible. In terms of the evaluation panels, each committee has at least five individuals on it and at least two of them are external to Prosper Portland. And that's important to us because it's not just a Prosper Portland strategy. It really is intended to be citywide and so we want to bring in uh partners to help us in this work. And with that, I will pass over to Roger.
Good afternoon, Roger Gonzalez. I'm a project manager with the Equity Governance and Communications Department. Um next slide, please. Yeah, this, we know that across the city that there are disparate economic realities uh based on racial and ethnic identities and groups in our, again, in Portland. This data that you are looking at is from Portland Business Alliance's twenty twenty-two Value of Jobs Cost of Living Report. Uh unfortunately, that is not available for the urban native community. However, you see that there's an obvious difference in those households earning enough to achieve self-sufficiency in Portland, which amounts to about ninety-four thousand dollars a year for a household of two adults and two children. Uh you could clearly see black and uh Latinx ex uh folks reporting self-sufficiency at about half the rate or a third of the rate of uh white uh Portlanders and API communities um respectively. So next slide. So next slide. Thank you. We know that across the city that there are economic disparities that are also playing out and disparate impacts based on geography. We are seeing that the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. We're seeing this report of 72% decline in downtown Portland employee foot traffic since before the pandemic. And also a 42% decline in visitors. At that same time, over the last 10 years, we've seen a 32% increase in racial or ethnicity in Portland's population since 2010. So you're thinking about that increase in diversity over the last 10 years, that disparate economic reality in terms of self sufficiency. And lastly, not even all of the industries in our region or in our city are facing the same sort of impact with 97% jobs retained in the green cities cluster throughout. Next slide. And so this helps paint a very broad and high level picture of the community engagement that buckets that we are anticipating for this work. Mayor Wheeler has convened an approximately 25 person steering committee to serve as the primary advisory group to the project team. Chair Cruz, I believe you are a member of this strength. We will have leadership roundtables, which will provide a form for us to obtain technical input from community leaders and experts. Focus groups are yet to be determined in terms of how many and the kinds of identities or groups that will be put together. But will include specific key areas that we identify a need for input from those groups. This may include workforce providers, individuals experiencing unemployment. Maybe it's a focus group specifically for black business owners or green cities businesses. And of course, the broad public will also have an opportunity for to participate in this process. And that may also include a briefing or perhaps such points with the Business Success and Job Creation Action Table spirited through the mayor's office. And I think it goes, it'd be well to remind folks that again, the representation in each of these groups will center racial equity. Next slide, please. Wanted to be sure to let the board know, our commissioners and the public know who is on the steering committee. And so these are the folks that we have confirmed that the as as participants, as members of that committee for the project. And so I'll just pause for a second to let folks kind of look through and have it up, which is a lot of names. But you'll see that this is, we believe, a broad representation across perspectives, industries and expertise. And again, is 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 the primary advisory group for the project. Of course, there will be many, many different inputs on strategy development. Next slide, please. And here's our current project timeline, which anticipates that the community engagement we discussed begins essentially now through the final draft development. Focus groups will likely take place, the bulk of that work likely taking place over the summer months. Steering Committee, we're expecting will meet no more than six times over the strategy development. So the subsequent six months, once we kick off. We are currently scheduled to kick off in early April. And the leadership roundtable, having perhaps a couple of meetings over the course of this work. The board, of course, will have a couple of engagement points following this update. And we welcome your feedback on how you would like to be engaged in the process. We believe that, given the multidisciplinary team we are pulling together, the Bureau partners who are with us that this is not just a prosper Portland economic development strategy. And the need to possibly align scopes for up to four different consulting groups that we will spend a substantive amount of time planning. And so you see that in that strategy design piece. And Adrian, really, really, Adrian, I really do believe that if we spend that time planning, then we can use that those glorious summer months in the early fall, developing the strategy itself. Our goal, as she mentioned, was to have a final draft available in September with board consideration in that same timeframe and subsequent city council consideration in October. Following that, we'll move into the implementation phase, which is currently TBD. There's a lot of work between now and then, but you can see the many different layers of what we're hoping to do at probably the highest level. And with that, next slide, please. We are open to questions or comments from commissioners.
Great. Thank you. That was great. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, Roger. I submitted a question by chat. I'm just wondering how the steering committee members were chosen and if that's intended to be a fixed body or if there are going to be some flux anticipated during the planning process.
Commissioner, I'm happy to take that one. So the steering committee was modeled in part off of the advisory body that we had when we did our strategic planning process in 2015. And you might recall from that 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 was chaired by the mayor and co-chared by the board chair at the time. So similarly, Tavo and Mayor Wheeler will be co-chairing that. The steering committee was also a smaller group, so 20 to 25 people felt like a good number. And then we had representatives of organizations who were board members instead of who who were wearing multiple hats. So what you'll see on the steering committee is that it's an opportunity for board members such as Chair Cruz to represent the organization and of course, bringing Prosper, but also bringing forward his professional day job. And so if we were to bring that slide up again, and happy to share that, but we have representatives from all of our major chambers of commerce, all of our key organizations, but it's instead of having it be staff leadership, it's at the board level. And that allows us to have fewer people, but to really cover the breadth of the work that we think will be discussed. So we wanted to make sure we had representation from different industry sectors, different cultural communities, different geographies, from labor, from academia, from real estate from. So it was a bit of a back and forth. The mayor, I think, extended invitations. And I, I think it's meant to be sort of a step group because it's just going to meet for about six months. But I think it'll be a really helpful sounding board. And we'll be able to bring a lot of their wisdom to this board as we are thinking about how we're refining the plan and getting information from the consultants.
Thanks, Kimberly. It makes sense.
Yeah.
Anybody, actually, is there an opportunity for us to maybe listen in on some of the community engagement? Will there be opportunities for the board members to perhaps participate even in some of the the community strategy sessions or I'm sorry, I'm blanking on what what all the different meetings that you're having. So we could hear some of the input from directly from the community.
Absolutely. So I think there are, you know, we have. Well, the team can speak to this, but we, 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 one of the advisory scopes is around engagement. So I think, you know, we put forward our thinking, but we really want to be open to their expertise as well. So at this point, I think what I, what I'm hearing is that the board would like to be engaged. And so I think we want to work with our consultants to think about what that might look like. Certainly, we had anticipated coming to this body formally for a couple of different. You know, just at some key decision points, but I also would anticipate that we would want to have a board representative at key focus groups. Right? So as we dig down deep into specific areas that might be of interest that we would incorporate board participation there. So Andrea, Roger, what what else would you add?
I think I would just add that something we're being thoughtful about right now is how to utilize the focus groups to bring in new voices. We think that's a real opportunity to engage with folks that, you know, otherwise might say, I've never actually been participating in economic development strategy of the city. And so how can we use those as a way to bring in books that we haven't already been engaging with? And so I think it would be really great to have y'all at some of those that we can hear from, you know, different and very specific conversations, I think would be helpful too. So we'd love to get y'all engaged in that part, in that part of the project.
There you go. So this is, this is, I mean, entirely in line with the thought that we're putting around also. How does our agency staff feel like they see themselves in this and are a part of this work as well? This will not just be Andrea, Roger, or Kimberly, you know, product. Ultimately, it will impact our entire agency staff. So similarly, I, what I'm hearing is an appetite for folks to really hear for themselves and be a part of that. So really do appreciate.
How is this? How is this particular initiative at the city levels? Stacking up with coordinating with, you know, broader metro level initiatives, state level initiatives, right? We're all, we're all in the same boat on some level. And we're all grappling with in different ways, this this K shaped recovery that that everyone is talking about. So I'm just curious how, what, what, what level coordination is there? Is that happening, Kimberly, mainly at your level with your, with your, you know, peers in other organizations? I'm just curious about how that's how that's playing out.
It's a great question. I mean, I think we I'm going to talk specifically about it at the state level and then the regional level. Because I think, you know, we have a lot of peers that we collaborate with, but so Sephora is leading a new strategic planning effort in international trade strategy for Business Oregon. And so at the end, and a new strategic plan will be coming forward. So we're going to be paying close attention to that. As you know, Greater Portland Inc. just wrapped up the regional comprehensive economic development strategy. And I had an opportunity to chair that. So we really understand the priorities within that plan. One of the ways that we are seeking to really collaborate, not just at a leadership level, but at a staff to staff level is we have the main staff person within Greater Portland Inc., who did a lot of the heavy lifting, actually participated on the request for proposal review process, and she's been a fantastic thought partner. So I think, you know, a lot of the themes are similar, right? There's, there's the people, there's the place, and there's the business tranche. And I think what we want to be doing with the quantitative and qualitative points is understanding what that scope is. What is the state taking on? What is our region taking on? But also understand what are those unique challenges and opportunities and strengths that Portland has. So there were things within the comprehensive economic development strategy for the region. Or rather, there were things that I think will show up in Portland's that just didn't show up as significantly for the region. You know, so I think we will be building on, but it won't be identical to what we've seen from other, from other bodies.
And just as a, as a point of information for for Commissioner Platt and the board to have. We did in the RFP process itself, put in a great deal of of recent and prior work, either regionally or otherwise, that we've done and seen in the city. And provide that and let them know, here's the universe of stuff we add. I think what we're trying to do is not hide the ball on any of those pieces, right? And say, here's all of it. And let's start figuring out how we build on that. Similarly, on some of the work and listening sessions that our agdev folks have done, you know, we know that we have a great relational connection to our community. And so how do we leverage that? So we don't experience, you know, the engagement fatigue. Or hey, these issues are still the same issues and why, why, why are folks continuously asking? But instead, just how can we build on that? And I could also clearly see this is a great opportunity for us to align perhaps legislative efforts moving into the 2023 long session. And there's no reason why we couldn't leverage what we're hearing from folks in this work in our partnership with OGR, the Office of Government Relations.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Just another question without putting too fine a point on. You mentioned earlier that this particular effort is being supported by the mayor's office and Commissioner Rubio's office. That's two out of five city commissioners. What is the, you know, what's the politics here? Are we going to be looking at a situation a year later where these plans are no longer supported because there's been a, a change in the makeup of city council or maybe even the city government's, you know, form is shifted by then. So I'm just kind of like, where are we going with this? What's, what's the? What's, what's the hope? And also what's the danger?
The, as, you know, as you might imagine, since we are within Mayor Wheeler's portfolio, right? Obviously, they're playing a key leadership role, but the participation and partners, I'm sorry, the partnership with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, particularly on the fourth scope, is a key reason that Commissioner Rubio is involved at this stage. I think we anticipate that the rest of the commission offices will be involved. At, you know, after we've selected our consultant team and as we're moving through the planning, we will be going in front of city council at key points as well. But, you know, just from a, there's also a bandwidth issue, you know, as different staff teams and different commissioners have different priorities, but given that we are starting with Prosper and Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, we really are relying on leadership from the mayor and Commissioner Rubio to help guide us in the selection of the consultants. But, you know, I think we, we have had a lot, there's been a lot of interest in this topic. And so we're looking forward to hearing from other city council members. And I think, you know, if I think about the strategic plan that we put forward in 2015, that was, I think resonated enough and was really in line with and was data driven and values driven. And that meant that even as there was an administration change, that we were able to continue on this trajectory and to deliver on the strategic plan. So I think one of the things that we want to do is to make sure that we have a plan that has a strong point of view and is data backed and that we have a lot of voices who are there to help us see those blind spots. But not have it be a plan for, you know, that just is everything. We really want it to have a strong point of view that says, what is it going to take for our city to recover in an equitable and inclusive and innovative way?
I think just to jump on that to say, I think that's where the stakeholder engagement is potentially the most exciting and the most daunting component of the project. Because if done well, I think it'll really inform us solidly of where we need to go, both community engagement, engagement with council engagement internally, as Roger said. But again, doing that well, I think, will be a tall order, since there is so much interest in making sure that we do it thoughtfully and bringing in new voices and really representing in the end product, what we're hearing in this early engagement and getting it early. Even using that community engagement to inform the data analysis, I think will be really compelling based on what we're hearing, really digging deep on those issues. I think that'll be exciting, but again, a little as a project manager daunting too.
Right. One last question then. Again, because of the mayor and Commissioner Rubio's upfront involvement, and you mentioned specifically Kimberly, their, their advice and, and perhaps direction as to choosing or at least guiding the RFP process to choosing a consultancy or number of consultants on this. There's, I'm looking at sort of the possible downsides. We choose a consultancy or consultants that the other three commissioners don't like, right? Or a reason to feel are biased or whatever. How do we, how do we hedge against that? Is it again, leaning upon the stakeholder engagement, making sure we have a broad base and we're bringing people along with us? I'm just trying to kind of head off any concerns that might arise on, you know, from, from city council.
You know, Commissioner, I think that there's a deference within council in terms of people, you know, each council member's portfolio and where people are involved and at which stages. So I think it's pretty common for for an agency within somebody's portfolio to have a staff representative participate on that process, to participate in that. And I don't think that other commissioners necessarily anticipate that they're going to be involved. Because there is that sense of it's, you know, you're the commissioner in charge, right? You, you get to have your staff be more involved. So I don't think that that is something that necessarily inherently politicizes it. I think it's part of making sure, particularly since city council invested so heavily in that, in this, that they are being brought along in the process. That said, I don't discount the political nature of the planning process. You know, we're in a time where there are a lot of needs, and I don't think that there is going to be consensus about the one way forward. So I think this is where having a pretty significant amount of outreach and us really understanding the, the needs and then working with our consultants to help craft as well as staff and subject matter experts to help craft solutions that we think will be very impactful. I think that process is going to be. I think that process is going to be instructive. I think it will be creative. I think it will be helpful. I don't think it's going to insulate us from criticism that we should be focusing on something else, right? But I think, you know, we will look to this body to help advise us and other partners to help advise us on, you know, as we come forward with the community engagement plan, where are those holes? Or what are those things that maybe we're not seeing so that we can make sure that the process stands? You know, stands on its own and that, that even if there is criticism, that we can stand by the process.
Thank you. That's, that's clarifying.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. There are no more comments. That was, that was great. Looking forward to the process and looking forward to generating the product that hopefully will be really useful and will, will guide us in the future. So thanks for all your good work. It's hard. I'm sure it's like herding, it's like herding cats to get all this together. So we appreciate that. All right. Well, are there any other, any other questions or comments? We're at the end of our agenda. Hearing, hearing none, there being no further items on the agenda. The Portland Board of Commissioners meeting for today is now adjourned. Thanks. Thanks very much, everybody. You guys did a great job and enjoy the nice weather.
Thanks, all.